Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have open forum, public input. Anybody here for any comments or anything? Now would be the time.
Just the whistle?
Nobody?
We're here to speak on girls wrestling.
Now's the time. Well, we'll do that now. We did that during open forum portion.
Okay. Well, with girls wrestling throughout the state of South Dakota, all of the school districts around us that currently compete in boys wrestling have a girls wrestling program. Parkston is one of the few schools without a program. And with times changing, I know people don't, some people don't believe girls belong in wrestling, but, you know, if there's boys in cheerleading, why can't we have boys or girls in wrestling? Last night, our principals took place in a cheer squad with the girls doing cheerleading. My daughter, she's come to know the sport. She loves it. She's competed in it, not associated with Parkston, and the girls that want to compete, they don't care if Parkston bans them. They just want to build a rousele underneath a Parkston name. That's all I've got to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything? No? Good. Okay. All right, we will move on to number five, approve agenda, change to agenda. Um, we do have one change. We will need to add a letter J under discussion items um, to discuss a possible calendar change.
And an action item.
Oh, and the action item to...
Two bills.
Uh, I lost it earlier. Letter C, under action items, we need to approve the invites from Lind and Parkston Electric for a CTE grant equipment. I will accept the motion to approve the changes.
So move. Move by Schonfelder, sign by Turing-Gerd, to approve the agenda with changes. Any other discussion? Carry none, no favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carried.
Uh, no conflict of interest that I'm aware of. Uh, we'll move on to the consent, consent agenda. Approve August minutes and approve claims. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Next. Move by Bronson, sign by Schonfelder, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Carry none, no favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carried.
All right, we want to number eight, information discussion, staff reports. We'll start with the high school principal. I don't see him in the room here.
I can go.
Okay.
Um, I guess some items of interest that you should be aware of as the school year starts ramping up here. Initiated Measure 28 is on the ballot here in November. I know we've heard it before. I think I brought it to you maybe in July and even in August for sure, um, even though I was absent at the August meeting, but this is one more piece of information about the initiated Measure 28 as to if that thing passes, um, the impact that that's going to have on every level, every form of government. Basically, it's the tax on food or consumables is the actual word. It's not food. But the definition is not clear as to what a consumable is. There's everything under the sun. Um, essentially what you're looking at is potential shortfall in the state's general fund. Could be as much as $160 million. Obviously, we're funded by the state. We're per pupil, student-teacher ratio driven. And if the state ends up, uh, this pass and the state ends up somewhere between 150, 160, 170 million dollars short in our general fund, you're gonna, we're gonna feel it here as a school district, and every school district in the state of South Dakota is gonna feel it. So, I guess what I was asking for, some direction on if you, as a school board, feel okay that perhaps, um, I, I come up with some sort of, sort of article, some information that I can give to Scott at the advance, and perhaps, you know, we publish that at our expenses as a school board, just to kind of give some people some insight. I don't know how many people have actually heard of initiated Measure 28. I know the, the measure, the ballot, or the election is here a couple of months away yet, but it's gonna creep up on us and, you know, if you're not informed on that concept, you know, a lot of, hopefully, the tradition in South Dakota typically, if you don't know nothing about it, you end up voting against it. But maybe not a bad thing, but still, I'd like to get them information out there so people can become better informed as to what initiated Measure 28 is. So, is it okay if I did something like that? Would you support that as a board? And allow me to submit that to Scott at the advance? Anybody's got any, you know, objections or yes, no, that, one way or the other, so? Okay. South Dakota State Assessment Report. I put that in your packet. So, what that is, is, um, just some information about how our academics fared in the 23, 24, on the, our kids fared on the state assessment in grades three through eight and 11. There's all kinds of documents in here, um, the colored pages. Um, there's different ways to look at this. If you look at the very first blank, or not blank, but the first white page, you can see what our overall math proficiency, ELA proficiency, science proficiency, and the categories that all equated to what we call our school performance index score, and how that goes across each school within our district. So you have middle school, elementary school, high school, our old Elm Colony, our new Elm Colony, and it gives you a synopsis as to what those proficiency levels are, as well as their total SPI score. Um, the other documents that are colored, you can break down that same information based on levels of performance. And that's levels one, two, three, and four, and that's by year. In any one given year for all those grades, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and 11. So you can look at that document, um, as to, in any one given year, how our students fared. And then there's another colored document in there that is student levels of proficiency by a class. You can track a class on this document and go when they were third graders to fourth graders, to fifth graders, to sixth graders. What is interesting to see, I don't wanna say interesting, it's a trend, and it's not just here in Parkston, but third, fourth, fifth usually do pretty good. Sixth, seventh, eighth, you can see it start falling off, and then typically, it, it, I wouldn't say it falls off greatly as we test them as juniors, but there certainly is a decline. As that A-class, you can track A-class across all their grade levels. And what you'll see is they're the levels of proficiency. They start out really well in, in levels three and four, which are proficient and advanced, and then levels one and two are low basic and basic. And then you'll see a little bit of a flip-flop about when they hit that middle school age. And the number of percents at those proficiency levels will, I don't know, I guess, yeah, I call it flip-flop. You'll see those percentages go the other way. So if third, fourth, and fifth grade, they're usually pretty good, proficient and advanced, you'll see that flip-flop by the time they get to middle school. And the reasons and rationale perhaps for that is probably more to do with our students' mindset, but it also becomes more difficult too. The state assessment's becoming more difficult in that process. I believe we're changing that tide, um, when you look at these particular documents. So, um, it's not exactly perfect where we want it to be, but I think in two years' time here, uh, where we've really honed in on our, our scores, we're seeing some of that levels three and four, um, maintain as our students get older as well. So, this is essentially not, our, our state public report card has not been published yet, but we get the opportunity to show it to school board members at this time. What I would like to do, and I believe I put it in my notes, is sometime in October, this was part of our, um, when we had our board retreat with associate school boards and Dr. Pogony, and one of the eight characteristics of an effective school board happens to be data savvy. And that was one of the things we talked about, and you guys, as a school board, said, you know, let's hone in on one particular thing, and it was data that kind of came to the attention. So, what I'm proposing is that we have a so-called data retreat for school board members where we get into a little bit more of the, the grit of it. And while the students, there's a performance concept to that, the part where it's hard to show you this information and really discuss it here in a school board meeting would be more about progress. So, I have data, rich data, to show you, while some people would argue that, well, your percents of proficient and advanced aren't maybe what we would expect them to be. I can show you growth. I can show you the numbers in any in particular grade in a content area, math, ELA, and science, as to the percentage of kids that are showing growth from one year to the next. And that's what you're looking for. Um, let's say, uh, a trajectory is that you constantly have that not probably 45-degree angle, but it, it's moving in that direction. So, um, typically, school districts always struggle with maybe riding a little bit of a roller coaster approach to data where maybe one year it's this, the following year it falls, and then the next year it jumps back up, and then the following year it falls. So, I will be bringing that to you at some point in time in October. You know, throwing a date out there for you, um, as to get the school board together so I can spend more time with you looking at some of that data, um, component, especially in the progress aspect of things. So, um, but that was, that's the information that was in your packet, uh, on our South Dakota State Assessment. So, um, letter C, September ADM count, um, that is in two weeks from this Friday, last Friday in September is when the count will take place. And as of right now, I believe we're actually sitting at 543. And we've had a couple, we had some additions and deletions in the last, since I wrote this. So, I'm pretty sure we're sitting at 543 students, which is a good thing. When we built the budget back in the spring of the year, we built it on 540. So, we're, we're a couple students ahead of the game at this point.
Compared to last year?
Um, a year ago, we were 544 is what we got paid on. So, pretty consistent, within one or two students. So, um, it's a good question. Um, and then my last component on there is, I gave you some information in your board packet, and it's just information. It's those colored documents about the playground grant. And that has to do with, um, an update where Mr. Fisher and I are working with, um, the vendor from Game Time, and the grant that I wrote actually a summer ago already, not this summer, but the summer prior to that. What we need to do, or what we are doing, is, um, getting a committee together, and we're gonna meet with Terry Strong is her name. She's coming. She's out of Nebraska. And then she gave us three renditions that she put together, um, for that committee to take a look at. And it's kind of a, a little bit of a menu approach. You can pick and choose what we really want. Feedback and input from the, the people on the committee to do that. And you can see the totality of numbers in there. The main proportion of the grant, I think I've said this before, but is on the main piece of equipment. There's one large piece of playground equipment that that is their match. So let's say that piece of playground equipment is 80 grand for the entire that chunk in itself. They'll pay 40, and then 40 of it's on us. So, there's some numbers in there, anywhere from, uh, 140, I think 160, 180, if I remember. You know, so there's options there that, uh, we're gonna take a committee to go through and potentially stay within the realms of financial, uh, possibilities. But we can get the most, I would say, bang for our buck too. Mr. Brunin and I looked at these, and there's a one that kind of stands out that if one larger piece of equipment in these three options is way, not way more expensive, but is more expensive than some of the others. So, if we really wanted to tap into that grant funding, um, that was something that we probably would take a hard look at. But we're gonna work with a committee of people to do that, and we gotta get that done here, I believe, by the end of September. So, Mr. Fisher?
Yep.
Yeah, we gotta...
We're getting together, I think, uh, 23rd or 24th is what we're looking at.
Yeah. When Terry, I said she, I think she could come up, so.
Yep.
Yep, okay. So that was more information, and those renditions are real, that you saw on there, you know. Kind of gave you an idea. We'll show that to the committee too, um, as to what potentially it could look like, you know, at that point in time. So, so that's what I have to share for you on my superintendent's report. So, um, both principals are here now, so whoever wants to jump into the mix, go ahead, so.
All right, good evening. Um, I think school year's off to a good start. Just kind of, we met this morning as a staff, and just kind of recapping, it's crazy that we're already into the fourth week. Um, and things are, are, we're getting our structure, our routine in place. Things have been going well. A couple of things I was just gonna talk about. Um, we are, we met as our school improvement team this last spring, and so we have been collecting data, using these first couple of weeks to collect data of where kids are coming to us, each grade level. Um, we have specific ELA and math goals that we're really focusing on this year. And so teachers have been collecting data for those, and we have that in place. So that way, we'll be able to, we're gonna track that five times throughout the year. So just wanted you guys in the loop on that. That's something, um, we're working on. And that's all on kind of a master spreadsheet, and we'll track that as we go throughout the course of the year, and then meet again to analyze that data at the end of the year.
Can I piggyback on that?
Yep.
So, that would be one more component back in that October data retreat for the board that we would be able to, um, discern and decipher and go over, you know, with that information, so. You know, you'll hear something very similar at the high school as well, but actually 60 plus, so.
Sorry. Yeah, no problem. So, that was something we just talked about. Another neat thing that our, our staff is doing, uh, we are, each teacher and their class are coming together to form their own purpose statement, uh, within their classroom. And so they're working on those collectively so that the students have some ownership in what the expectations are. And so it's, it's kind of a neat thing, and you'll see those hanging in the classrooms when you walk in. Some are big, bright, and beautiful. Some are, you know, black and white, but still have a great message to them. So they look all different sizes and shapes, but the kids have a part of that. And so it's been a, a neat process for me to just hear from the teachers, if they sit down and talk with their students, and then to see that up there. And it's something for them to revisit if, you know, in a couple of weeks, a couple of months, we stray from maybe expectations, always to come back to that. So just another one of those things that I think is important. Um, and so most, a majority of staff has that up, have those up now. They'll all have them up before conferences come at the end of the month. So those are a couple of things that we've been doing. Uh, we're continuing with our seven mindsets again this year. Really trying to have student council take some more ownership in that. And so they're helping with those mindset meetings, kind of lead some of that. So that's one of the, the goals for this year is that they start to take the lead. Less of me, more of them is kind of the focus there. But otherwise, from elementary standpoint, I think things are, are going well. I don't have too much else to report on as far as that goes. We did get our, our SACET program started up and running again. So that's going. Trying to think. I think those are kind of the main, big things that I had highlighted that I wanted to share with you guys. Oh, another thing is our buddy system. That was something that we piloted last year. We're partnering up fourth and fifth graders with younger students. So our fourth graders this year are with our preschool and beginner garden students, and fifth graders with kindergarten. And so we start each day where, out in the morning, we're walking if it's nice outside, and those big buddies find the little buddies, um, and are partnering up with them. They walk them into school. They help them put their materials in the locker, even sometimes go into the classroom with them to start their day, and just make sure they get settled. Um, it's something that we implemented last year to kind of help lower some of the anxiety maybe of a, a new, you know, new student, especially the littles. They sometimes are a little nervous. Um, and, and we found that our big kids liked it almost as much as the little kids, maybe even more at some, some point. So, those kids are working collectively, and then we're working on with Mr. Knipling, spreading that even more because it was such a success. He has some middle school kids that we're hoping to get down in with our first, second, and third graders, 'cause those guys don't have any buddies right now. So that's something we're working on, and hopefully, you know, teachers are communicating, trying to get that set up there too. And then it was kind of neat, I was out at Colony today doing a staff meeting with them, and they've started it out there. So it just, it's been really positive, and they had all good things to say as well, so. Really think that that's been a, a big uplifting thing for our culture. Gives the older kids, when we can remind them, hey, there's someone little watching everything that you do. It's an easy, quick reminder. It helps them get focused, so. Those are a couple of the big things we've been doing so far to start the year. From an activity standpoint, big night tonight. Just had our first ever competitive cheer competition. It was awesome. I, uh, stayed in and watched until Parkston performed, so I didn't get to see the whole thing, but I was blown away by the amount of fans and turnout we had for that, and it was fun for those girls to have a home competition, especially during homecoming week. I thought that was pretty cool that we were able to do that for them, um, and a chance for them to showcase all the hard work they've been putting into it. So that was cool. Volleyball, football, cross-country, golf, all rolling along, doing pretty well. Just really, I think in a good point, you can tell the kids put a lot of time and effort into uh, the craft over the summer, and I think that's paying off with a lot of success, so. And that's going good. I'm working on, Mitchell's hosting a leadership, um, kind of like a summit, maybe you would call it, here in a couple of weeks, and so I'm hoping to take 14-ish seniors, uh, captains, up to that. So I'm working on a list right now. I've been in communication with the Mitchell AD, and we're working on getting up there to that, but it's something new that they're putting on. There's gonna be a guest speaker up there. I actually heard that speaker at our AD convention last spring, and he was really positive. And so I'm excited for our kids to hear that, and then collectively, I think they're gonna have some activities, some breakouts for leaders in different sports to cross and, and have conversations, so. I'm excited to, to try that out and see what we get from there. But, uh, otherwise, homecoming week, you know, is always fun and exciting, and we got our dress-up days going, but culminates at the end with the parade, and I think, Mr. M, did you talk about the parade at all? Maybe that's something we should touch on?
I did not.
Okay. So we're gonna flip our route of the parade this year. It's something we've talked about for a couple of years, um, but we're gonna actually do it this year. So we're gonna have the kids start walking from the school. Floats will also follow them from the school. Um, I just think it's gonna be safer, um, just help us. Always chaotic trying to get buses to get across town to drop kids off, and so battling that traffic and everything else that goes with that. Here, we're gonna be able to organize them. We'll take them right out the fitness center doors, walk them right down Main Street. Um, we also think that, you know, potentially families can camp out on that park sidewalk where we had some decent shade and utilize that space. So we've been working, Mr. Knipling's been working with the police department to make sure they have some kind of blockade set up for us, to make sure that it's, uh, not cars protruding out into the street too much, and, uh, we're working with them to have an area for the kids to finish. So they'll end up finishing where they used to start, by the Catholic Church is where they'll, the kids will stop. The floats will continue on past Forman Manor, um, so that the residents there that like the parade, that can get out and see things coming by, they can still see the floats coming through. And then we'll be able to load buses from the church parking lot and, um, rotate back here, um, for drop-off, so. I think it's gonna work well. We're excited. I think teachers are excited about it. So, that's something else we're new, we're trying, and hopefully, so. Any questions or anything for me? Okay, thanks, guys.
Good evening, good evening. You know, to kind of piggyback off a lot of what you said, I'll start with, um, you know, homecoming, this being a big week, right now on the sixth or 12th end. Uh, you know, we had coronation last night. I thought coronation is the perfect example of how our staff and our coaches and admin all work hard to make something really great happen. I thought our coaches spoke really well. I thought our student council advisors had everything ready to roll. I thought our kids all did a great job. Our, our junior student council advisors that were the MCs. Our royalty looked great, uh, really good participation, band chorus, um, performing, awesome job, like all around. That's what it's all about, and I thought they did a really good job. Uh, we've had a lot of fun, you know, the dress-up days have been pretty well, um, participated in. Uh, we have our class Olympics. We kind of do class games during every SRB every day. Yesterday, we did musical chairs. Today, we did the, uh, hot dog 800 relay, where essentially you gotta eat a hot dog around 200, and you got four per class. Pretty entertaining, pretty tiring. I ended up being on the staff relay team. I'm a little gassed tonight, but it was fun. We got a few more days of that. We changed it up this year. We were actually like, every single event is worth points, and we're keeping track. The winning class at the end will, um, get a pizza party, and so hopefully, it's keeping them a little bit more motivated, a little bit more invested. Trying to throw some little carrots out there, like today, whichever high school. Group one, they get to have open lunch tomorrow, so the seniors are pretty excited. They, they cheated their way to victory, and now they, uh, they were not done with their hot dogs, where they took off running. But either way, their seniors will get away with it, and they get to go out and about. So if you see seniors at lunch tomorrow, it's, it's okay. It's part of the deal. The first four weeks have been very smooth. I can't believe it's already the four-week mark. Our first ineligible list comes out tomorrow. I can't feel like, I can't believe it's already time for that. Uh, but, you know, it's really been smooth. The kids settled into a routine right away. Very happy, very proud of them for just kind of settling in, getting to work. Teachers and, uh, paraprofessionals as well. I just, I couldn't believe how well the first week went. It's just kind of carried through. You know, this is always the end of the honeymoon phase. We'll start to have our hiccups, and you're trying to get these kiddos rolling, but, but I think we're ready. I think it'll be good to go. So as long as we can keep this momentum going, this camaraderie and school spirit, which is what this week's all about, we're in good shape. Couple things on the horizon. Um, all juniors and some seniors are gonna be going to a, um, college fair in a couple of weeks. I also, today, just got booked, kind of something I'm excited about. In mid-November, we have a, um, Build Dakota Scholarship Roadshow coming to the high school, which I am super excited about. So they're gonna come in and give a ton of information to our eighth through 12th grade students about what the Build Dakota scholarships are all about. And we're inviting any, uh, parents that want to come, any businesses in town that want to come, learn a little bit more about the program. We're gonna really work hard to get the word out, uh, and try and get that going. That's November, I think, 26th, uh, right at the end of the day, like 2:20. So that, we just got that kind of booked today. Pretty neat deal. If you see anybody in town, let them know. But yeah, we're, we're excited. Got a lot of momentum going. Really proud of our seniors. I always think they're the second set of adults, and then they've done a lot of good things for us. I'm appreciative of our seniors, appreciative of our staff. Hopefully, we can keep going. That'd be good stuff, so yeah. It's been, uh, been great. And they're, they're doing a good job of settling into the new space and using it, which has been good too. We kind of moved our PE and stuff into there. Boy, you can't, you walk in after school, our kids are utilizing the space. And even like our outdoor classroom space, whether it be lunchtime or any other time, that's starting to get used to, so kind of fun. Any other questions for me? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to discussion items.
I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. On this here, um, I understand you're gonna have a committee look at this. What happens after that?
So, once that committee and Terry comes, it will craft whatever comes out of that conversation. Whatever tweaks that she needs to make, uh, within that actual footprint of the playground, the components that she has included in the playground. That's where, outside the big apparatus, the rest of the little things, that's kind of the menu approach. That's kind of the picking and the choosing. So there might be something in option one that's not in option three, or one and two that's, you know, that they want to move over to the one. Decide which main apparatus that they really want to look at, um, from that point, and then it's piecemealing the other pieces around it.
Are we, are we getting rid of all our, all our playground equipment?
Yeah, yep. So everything that's current is going to be removed. So, that process will come in the spring of the year. We've talked about that, so we would have to put that out for... It, it'll come on the agenda as to maybe how we want to dispose of that. There's a couple of different trains of thought I have on that is that, one, could you sell it? Okay, and if you did, how much would you get for it? Or, if somebody's willing to come and dismantle it, okay, here, you have it. You know, so, it's not something that is going to be, I suspect, high on a particular contractor vendor's list. They do not do that. They will install. This Game Time will install.
See that.
But they are not coming in and removing what is current. But they are not coming in and removing what is current. We have to prep the site as far as making it, you know, clean of all other obstacles in order for the new footprint to come in, which will happen probably in July. Yeah, how do we wanna dispose of that? It's not on the agenda, but at some point in time, we're gonna have that particular conversation, so, as to how to get rid of it.
I think somebody brought it up in one of our Mammoth meetings to keep it and use it over-
Possibly.
-over, you know, when we do something over there, I know it's a few years down the road.
Yeah.
But-
It's, the main process there is to, if you go out there and you take, you walk around and you look, if you don't bring in, if you don't bring in a, a team, and I suspect a very large number of people from a team perspective, the dismantling of that thing could take a significant amount of time, effort, energy, things of that nature. Then, you're going to have to have some heavy equipment, because I've asked a few people and they've assured me that that playground equipment, if you start digging a hole, it's in the ground a very significant distance, and it's full of concrete on every pole that you see out there.
Sure.
So, you know, somebody, even if, well, you're gonna give it to me, I'll come take it down for free. But I think when you actually get them here and go through that process and have that conversation, they may like, hmm, hmm, maybe I have to rethink that a little bit. Or then, if we have to get rid of it, we may have to look at as a school board, as a district, paying somebody, contract somebody to actually dismantle it and remove it. You know, so, obviously, there's an expense to that whole concept as well. So, I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. Pearl, so, yeah. But thank you for asking that. It's, it seems rather simplistic, but when you really stop with all the moving parts, it's like, makes my head hurt just a little bit, so.
Okay, we will move on to review policy manual. The policies as printed in the agenda, we're up for a first reading. Are there any questions on those?
Just real quick, you got E.C.B.'s Buildings and Grounds Maintenance, E.D.V.A.'s Maintenance and Control of Instructional Materials, E.E.A.'s Student Transportation Services, E.E.A.A. Walkers and Riders, and then E.E.A.B.'s School Bus Scheduling and Routing, and then Policy J.C., J.F.C.L. is Students Registered as Sex Offenders. So, those are up for first reading. There was nothing in those, in the policy manual that I felt needed any further explanation or further tweaking at that point, but those are all up for the first reading, so.
I guess, questions, comments I had on the route? I mean, do we do all that? We don't really technically approve a route or anything, do we, or?
Like, as far as, go to 277, take a left, go down to, take a right, no, not per se. We work with Foreman Bus Company to establish those routes to get, maximize the efficiency, where kids are, families are, to, I guess, maximize the number of miles or minimize the number of miles within that. So, I usually during the summertime, late summer, I visit with Charlie, the bus manager, at that point in time, and we go over, not the routes per se, but we have some conversations about, okay, any place that we can maybe save a mile or two, you know, could we do some shifting, maybe instead of bus three, that particular family moves over to bus four? And only because that is, is trying to maximize, again, you know, the number of people we have on the route, number of students we have on the route. And it all stems from, we try to keep the routes less than, you know, hmm, an hour and hour or fifteen. If we get to an hour and fifteen, if we're going over that, then we're having some thought processes as to, maybe is there a way to move one family to this route or that route to help, you know, pick up the slack, if there is any slack to be picked up at that point in time, so.
Yeah, I agree with any, all that, I just, to me, it kinda read like we were specifically designating a road, and I, you know, we're not, we're not doing it. That's not even practical, I mean, it changes from day to day depending who's ready, so.
Right, right. I guess I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see that back when you were, I mean, I read through that one particularly, because, just because, um, because I did have a conversation with Charlie the-
It just adds the term, you know, official bus route. If that, we're taking that into context, that's just the kids that need to be picked up, you know, that's one thing as compared to the actual road we need to drive, which anybody-
Which document, what, what policies? E.E.A.
School Bus Scheduling and Routing.
E. Maintenance and Controls, Student Transportation, Work, Walkers, where the commandment is on. Second to the last, all of these. Which paragraph?
Oh, it's the third one down, I guess, is the one I have noted, but, um...
I, you know, I don't know, I mean, when I read through that and I was rereading it again, I don't-
I mean, I don't wanna make-
Is there a part of it that gives you angst?
No, not really, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're all aware that we're not, we don't have an official bus route.
Yeah, no. No, it isn't like-
I mean, a lot of it is up to the discretion of the driver.
Absolutely. Well, Mr. Bruny, you wanna speak to that?
Certain roads are passable at certain times and certain roads are not at other times.
So, you do what you do and you get where you get, so, but for sure.
Yep.
There is no set path, how about that? You know, so.
Okay, um, there's no questions on that, we'll move on. Um, we'll review the policy manual. This is the second reading of the policies as printed in the agenda. First reading was last month. There was, you weren't here, Pat, but there was, and this is me again, I'm just, there's all kinds of problems, but-
Yeah, no, we're good.
The equal access, um, policy, I guess. I don't really have anything specific, it just, I guess I was looking for some clarification as to you or the principals have the ability to decide if an appropriate organization can have use of the facility? And that, because, I mean, obviously, the building is open for anything that's appropriate in nature, and I just didn't wanna make sure that not everybody has access for anything, you know?
No. What, the equal access policy has more to do with a lot of, I would say it's political in nature. So, when you have outside entities, outside groups wanting to come in and host events, whether it's public meetings, things of that nature, because it's a public facility, so to speak, funded by taxpayer dollars, it is, as to, in the policy, what regulates those decisions as to what equal access means? You know, so, if you let the Girl Scouts in, are you letting the Boy Scouts in? Or if you're letting the Democrats in, are you letting the Republicans in? I mean, those are really broad-based, I get it, but it really defines as to how that is processed and what needs to be considered. The main thing there is that, as a school board, you have something on paper to revert back to, to have conversations. That one, it's maybe not inclusive all over, but it's not exclusive either. So, when somebody comes to the table, wants to have that access, what is the guiding principles that's going to, whether it's admin or school board, to determine yea or nay in that request? So, yeah. But, it's certainly something I'll take a look at.
Well, I was just, it was my-
I don't have it in front of me.
... we can say, we can take it on a case-by-case basis, so.
Yeah, for sure, absolutely. And it's not blanket, you know, for sure.
Any other questions on that? Okay, that will be presented next month for a final reading and adoption. We'll move on to the next set of policies as printed in the manual. This is up for a final reading and adoption. Any, any questions on any of those? I don't believe we've had any past. If not, I'll accept a motion to approve those policies.
Moved by Trager?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pearl, any other discussion? Let's approve the following A.S.P.S.D. policies, E.B.B.B., E.B.C., E.B.C.A., E.B.C.B., E.B.C.C. Any other discussion? Harry Nunn, all in favor of this act?
Aye.
Both same side? Motion, carry.
Next item, item D, Building and HVAC Projects Review.
So, yeah, I wish I could sit here and tell you that I have actual signed a document says that the H.V.A.C. project is complete, but I do not. I would say it's functioning about somewhere between ninety-five and a hundred percent effective. It's how, whatever, but in our engineer who oversaw the project, doing a final, one of his walkthroughs here towards the end, had discovered that in the multipurpose space up in the two balconies up there that provided air conditioning to the MPR, that the actual condensing, or not the condensing unit, but the coils that were in there that provide for the A.C. were in there backwards. Didn't mean that it wouldn't run, but it just won't run with the level of efficiency in which it's supposed to run. So, he said, no, we're not doing that, which, good for us, but now we don't have A.C. in the MPR, because they gotta go up there and take all the valves and the controls off and then cut where they need to, to take out the coil, and then flip-flop the coil and put it back in and put the control valves and the, all the stuff back on it in order to make it operational. So, other than that, it's, it's really been, even since I wrote the board packet, they've been here on a couple of different service calls and they've cleaned up a lot. We finally got our last room, which eventually, the can, the, the outdoor unit, the condensing unit of itself came out of the box from the factory, dysfunctional, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. Condensing unit was bad. So, we finally got that done at the end of last week, I believe. That was Mrs. Bruny's room, so she'd been getting through, you know, first start of school here without any A.C. She was the only one, you know, just happened to be that way. But, we had some issues in the kitchen, issues, issues in the commons, we seemed to have gotten those straightened out. Couple of rooms down at the high school end that I think we got, and a lot of it, I think, has been, they're finding leaks, and then you have to seal up those leaks, repair them some way to, in order for that to start operating the way it should. But when it doesn't operate the way it should, then it freezes up, and then it shuts down, you know, so. But, I have yet to hear anything from A.C. Engineering about the actual final document that we sign off that says the project is one hundred percent complete. So, I anticipate that, you know, coming next week at some point in time, my last conversation with Damon DeWitt. So, questions on the H.V.A.C. project? So, trust me, nobody wants them done more than I do, but I want them done right, do, so. So, I will give him some credence on going up there and actually looking and discovering, no, this isn't right, and making him change it, so. The building update, essentially, everything on the inside is complete. I do have some substantial documentation that, substantially completion, but obviously, on the outside, there was one little piece of parking lot that's gotta be completed yet. And then, final grading and seating, that's coming from Meebus Nursery, hopefully, we can get that done here next week. And then, the sign on the Trojan Fitness space, that's all gotta come down, and then two, two panels of steel gotta come down and be replaced, and then the new letters that they will put back on there. Other than that, you know, there really hasn't been anything that has been discovered, you know, from a completion perspective and even operational perspective, that seems to be of issue at this point in time. So, that's updates on our H.V.A.C. and building projects to this point, so.
All right, we will move on to discuss the Athletic Complex Master Plan.
So, this project, not project, this concept, Matt is on that particular committee, Scott was on that committee, we've had the admin on that committee. This was a joint cooperative effort with the city of Parkston, and it all had to do with looking at our space to the north and finding ways there to maybe maximize that space. It had to do with summer rec programs, mainly softball, baseball, those types of things where, you know, the fields that exist over here and down by Rose Borman Park, some of those becoming a little bit more inadequate, but it's the number of events that take place in any one given summer that are happening on those venues. So, you know, I put in your packet some ideas, the renditions, now Matt has seen this, Scott had seen this, you know, Mr. Knipling, Mr. Fisher had seen this, they sit on that, Craig had seen this, and working with the city, the city partners have seen this as well. We have yet to circle back with Mammoth on bringing this to a rendition of completion. And I've visited with Derek Bootig from Mammoth, and he's adamant about making sure that both the city and the school district end up with a product that they had envisioned when they went into the beginning of it. And he feels that that hasn't happened yet on Mammoth's part. So, we have to have at least another meeting yet here, and, you know, we're back into school, obviously, and I had some things there that I didn't quite, I wasn't available to get all this done, but they are supposed to be getting back to me with a couple of suggestive dates when they can come back to Parkston and we can get the city back together and we can go through, you know, that plan and have some deeper conversations about, you know, what do we like, what don't we like, what should it be, what are we looking at, how to create something that, when it's all said and done, you know, that we can agree to. Only from the standpoint of, this is what it could be, again, city, newer Parkston school district, you know, I don't think any of us went in there with the notion that, you know, this is something that's gonna happen in the next, you know, one year, two years, five years, whatever. But I think it's something that, you know, when that particular product gets created and it gets handed over to us, you know, something for the school board to think about is, okay, one, what does it look like? Two, most importantly, where does that fit into budgetary perspective? How do we take a look at potential, because it all comes with costs, they got it all spelled out in there, as to, how are we gonna go about funding that? Right? So, I think we need to have some deeper conversations, whether that's, you know, allocating the line item in our capital outlay, putting a dollar amount on that and say, that gets stowed away for however many years until, you know, somebody takes, we make a decision as a school board as to take a look at developing this particular project. So, you know, and then same thing, you know, deeper conversations with the city as to, you know, how this really is going to be, you know, at some point in time, the funding question, right? I think we went into it with the premise that nobody even knew what it could look like. Same thing when we built the new multi-use facility. You know, you guys as a board decided, well, let's move forward, but let's, give us some ideas what it could look like first, and then some particular pricing, and then you made a decision to move forward. I don't see this as being any different. So, are we there yet to have that conversation? No. Because we need to meet together again as that large group committee, so. I'm waiting for Mammoth to give me some dates. When that happens, you know, so, Matt, Scott, our admin team, you know, and the city's people will come back together and, you know, have that conversation with Mammoth, with the goal of trying to bring it to some fruition- and, you know, have that conversation with Mammoth with the goal of trying to bring it to some fruition, you know, and some closure. And then kind of the three options that they put in there, you know, what did that committee kind of decide, you know? So, questions on what you saw? Because John, you've never seen this before. You know, Jed, I don't think you've seen this before either. Jill hasn't seen it, you know, she was here. So, if you had any questions about what you saw or ideas or concepts or, you know, process, even the numbers associated with it, I mean, so. I mean, full disclosure, any one of those deals, you're looking at about a four million dollar investment, you know, to bring something like that to fruition in that northern part that sits out there, so. But yeah, questions?
No comment. I mean, for me, it's not so much whatever particular item you wanna choose, this upgrade or that upgrade, or turf or grass or whatever. It's just a matter of where is it gonna be out there so we can plan? Do we need to plant trees or whatever?
Sure.
Because in my mind, you know, this is a long ways out. Unless, so, but I'm a big proponent of planning and this is the right stuff. I mean, these guys have all the knowledge in the world. I will say, I think some people, including me, maybe questioned a little bit. They had a figure in there for a concession stand. And, I mean, it was good concession stand. So, I'm sure it was top of the line, but I know we wouldn't need something like that. So, I brought in the question a little bit, what, how much is the field or whatever upgraded? So, there were some questions there and I know there were some questions about that from the city too, so. But a lot, there were some other things in there that could then, you know, discuss whether it's needed or not. Parking lot, you know, do we need more parking out there? But like I said, for me, it's just where, if we, when we, if, when we do something, where is it gonna be? That way we know where it's at and.
And I think that's Mammoth's whole point. Exactly what you said, man, is like, do we need that type of, I don't know, what people would consider to be a Taj Mahal? A concession stand with restroom? Maybe not. You know, I think we need to go deeper with that, right? But I think the biggest component of that is where in that whole footprint, that fifteen acres that sits out there, where do we really wanna see that, you know, if, when it comes time to, if it ever does? But this is where the committee says this would work best, you know? And they, it's not them. It is certainly those people on the committee making a decision and guiding, them guiding us through that as far as, you know, what would best work in what particular location, so. And they feel that they haven't done that yet. I mean, I almost to the point where, you know, I don't know, let's just wrap this up, Derek. And then he goes, no, 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 timeout here. He said, we don't feel good. You paid a fee to us, the city and you both, and we're not just gonna wash our hands of this. We're not just gonna take you, Parkston School District and the city and say, ah, we're good. We didn't deliver what you asked us to deliver. So, we, we're coming back here, we're gonna do this the right way.
Well, in their defense, I think the ball, the target changed a number of times. What we, what the committee initially indicated and then actually seeing the price tag.
Yeah, sure.
Things changed.
Did they ever come back with a grass number?
Well, and that's remember when they left, that's something that they have to bring back to us yet. So, that's part of the conversation, you know, when they do come back. He has not, nobody has shared that with me in order to share it with you guys, so. Whatever you have here is exactly, you know, what I put in the packet, what you guys all saw. I haven't seen anything more either, so. And their main architect, Michael, is working on this and sitting down in Kansas City, you know? So, trying to get everybody back on the page here to get this opportunity and taking hopefully next step, but maybe a step in finality too, so.
Sure. But basically, for you guys, what we asked them to come back with is instead of this being, this being all turf, because that's what the price is, this is all turf, to just make the baseline turf, the infield turf, and then leave this all grass. Come back with a price, come back with a new price on that. Because once we heard the time or the life expectancy on this is about fifteen years, it's like, yeah, we need to maybe check in something different, so.
And there you're trying to find a happy medium where the infield, where you don't have to worry about, let's just say the orange field over here. I mean, if it rains two inches, you're probably not playing on that deal. You know, no, you could play in the outfield perhaps, you know, but that's not gonna take care of that. So, maybe the infield component is more of the turf aspect than everything. On the outer skirts of it remains a grass component. And that's what, I think the people there at that last meeting, that was a suggestion that we gave them. They're supposed to be bringing that component back to the committee.
One of the concerns the city had was just having somebody to prepare all those fields, you know, painting and everything, so that was, really gave that some.
Turf, yeah, turf infield.
Instead of the whole footprint being turf, so. Anyway, so it's, I'm still working on it, be patient with me. So, I'll get those dates here set and then hopefully we can get them back here, so. That's kind of what we have there.
It's nice to see that we're looking at something there that was, I happen to be, I was one of my first years on the board, but that was our plan, was to develop that there. Because at that point in time, we really didn't wanna buy that whole, all the acres.
Oh, you didn't?
We did not. But we decided in the end, it was available, so I not move ahead with it. And that's exactly what we're doing now, is what we had in mind back a number of years ago to address ball fields and the city. So, it's nice that it came full circle. I know it's just a work in progress, but at least we have some right intentions here, so. It's nice to see the city engaged on it.
Appreciate that feedback, so.
Okay, we'll move on to the fitness center acceptable use agreement for students and public.
Okay, so, first and foremost, why is that not accessible yet? First and foremost is I don't have door security access control on the fitness space yet. They're coming September eighteenth. So, what I don't wanna do is open it up, create an open door policy and a habit that we're gonna have to try to turn around and reel it back in. Now, community is gonna have full access. Our students are gonna have full access, staff, full access to that. But the premise is going to be, once that card access is on that fitness space door, essentially, even during the course of the school day, a greater part of the school day, that the multi-use facility and the fitness space, those doors are going to remain from that corridor aspect, essentially locked, because any teacher who needs to go in there for PE classes will have the access control even into the fitness space. The main reason is, is that we can control, not control, we can keep track of accountability and responsibility. Offer the kids using it. You wanna go in there and use it? Take your card and swipe the door access control. That way it records and I know who's in there. We do have security in there. We have a camera in the fitness space. We have a camera in the multi-use space. We have a camera in the hallway. So, there's really no way to get in there without us going back and being able to know who's in there. But we did not want to be prohibitive to our kids and allow our kids to go in there at any point in time. It's gonna be open to the public essentially from five thirty AM to seven thirty PM, because then we get into the school day.
Seven thirty AM.
What did I say?
You said PM.
Sorry. Five thirty AM, seven thirty AM. And then school is in session. And then at the end of the day, essentially, activities, athletics, whatever's going on in those, obviously. And that was written and we opened the door three years ago, that they have first access to that. But anybody could still come in and use that as long as they have a membership and access control. And then essentially is game on, same thing for any community member, six PM to ten PM will have access to that facility as well. Again, how are you gonna get in? Membership and access. The only way you're gonna get an access card is the membership fee that we have stipulated in the agreement. So, until I can get access control of the fitness space, number one, I don't wanna just turn it loose and have people... Yeah, here we go. I can come in there no matter what. Well, one, you didn't pay a membership. Two, you don't have a card to get in there. You shouldn't be in there. And then it's not that you shouldn't be in there, it's that you didn't do diligence to get in there like we want to. And the two memberships essentially, joint community approach with the Avera footprint, or you could do it independently as Parkston School District. You could do one or the other. So, these acceptable use agreements is something that everybody is going to have to sign. I'm gonna have every one of our students sign the acceptable use agreement that's designed for students. Then if you are a community member, I have a community acceptable use agreement you're gonna have to sign, okay? And then if you are a Parkston School District patron who has kids in school, you have an acceptable user agreement, because there's different price points in that that we've decided as a board here a couple of months ago in order to make it available to those particular entities. So, I know people are growing impatient with me, but I'm not gonna turn this thing loose until I have the ability to keep it under control. So, are our kids using it? Yes. Do we have people from outside the community that have been in there? Yeah. But eventually, when I get card access on that, or we get card access on that, there again, those that maybe established a bad habit thinking it's just open door policy wide open, I can come anytime I want to, even at midnight, you won't get in there because you won't have card access. So, it'll rein that stuff in at that point in time, so.
And remind me, maybe this has changed, but we can regulate for the different groups, different time periods where they can have access through that card?
We are not going to. It's basically you have that card, okay? If you are a nine through twelve student, then you have access. K through eight, they, at this point in time, do not have access. K through eight will not have a card, are nine through twelve. So, how does the seventh grader get in there? You know, during course of the school day, was with the teacher, not a big deal. Before school, after school, as of right now, he's not gonna get in there unless he's with a sibling who's in high school. Then who does have card access that? Or a particular parent who has access because they have paid their membership and they've been given that card.
But I was referring to more of the non-patron side where limited to the morning and the evening. Well, those cards won't work or they'll just...
That's what we have to work on with the company to make sure those cards. You have, the cards too, you can set up for certain doors only as well. And, you know, the data time. There's some things that we have to tweak that we've never done before, you know, like time slots. One, okay, from six to ten, this card only works. So, there's some things we gotta work through the software with them, find out what we actually can do.
And they are coming next week within the software then. You know, it's not like, okay, well, let's just say Elliot or Ada, here's your card. Ada can go to any door in here and get into any outside entrance that she wants to? No, because the card won't work in every one of those doors. It's gonna be limited as to which door she can actually scan and go into. And then the timeframe as well. What we have to figure out, is it actually the door that shuts down or is it the card that shuts down? And that's something that we will work with Convergent on. You know, until we can rein all that in, we're just not comfortable yet saying, okay, here it is, get after it, you know? Even though we do have our students that are in there, you know, using it. So, and I know the public is chomping at the bit and, you know, we've had some calls and we've tried to explain this, you know? We got people in there, they wanna use the batting cages. I understand that, you know, but give us some time to make sure that we're making it accessible, you know, that is in a controlled manner, so. So, that's, you know, what I put those in there, so you're just aware what those acceptable user agreements say. And then again, I am going to meet with all of our nine through twelve, actually our six through twelve, and explain to our middle school kids what's happened here and then our nine through twelve, and they're all gonna sign this agreement. They want a card, they're gonna sign this agreement, period. So, then we'll go from there. And then anybody in the community, once we do that, we get that information out. We've kinda done it, but I've had a couple of people that have community memberships that have bought them and they're being patient and they're waiting for that access control card, so. But, questions on that? We're getting there.
Okay. We'll move on to girls wrestling inquiry. We spoke on this last month a little bit. We were gonna bring it back this month. I don't know if you have any more information, Pat or if Ant has had it here? Do you have any more input on this?
Well, I did a little checking out. One of the questions was when do we need to make a decision by? And so, we need to have a decision in place by, before November to declare like, yes, we officially do have girls wrestling. So, that is the timeframe on that. So, that was kind of the one thing that I checked on. Craig, did you end up contacting business managers to check on?
No.
Okay, that's good. So, other than that, again, I just have continued conversations with Coach Bonti. And we've talked at length about just what it could potentially look like. Again, right now, what I would bring to the board is that we are looking for something similar to what we did with softball. We want to bring forth the girls wrestling program, basically just to use the school, you know, I don't know how you word it, but we want the school's backing so we can say that we have it, but they would have to fund the program themselves. Not to say that would be a forever thing, but I think for now, just like we've done in the past with softball, what we did with gymnastics originally, I think it's in that same status right now. And so, that's what I would pitch to the board. I've talked with Dan about that and we have a couple of people in mind that we've have kind of penciled in that would be interested in applying for that position, even though it's an unpaid coaching position. But we would treat that just like we did with the softball coaching position. We would open it up to the public. We would go through an interview process with that, just like we did with softball. So, that would, the school would still oversee that part. You know, we would work with Coach Bonti to come up with the scheduling and all of that. It would just be that the program itself would be responsible for the funding, which would be entering into tournaments. You know, in talking with Coach Bonti, I don't think we'd go like a full schedule right away. We'd probably go, you know, a couple of tournaments depending on our numbers, but not a full every weekend type schedule. So, we'd have to pay for tournaments. We'd have, you know, to pay for transportation, you know, and, or figure out transportation. Softball would drive themselves, you know, or had a couple of drivers lined up. So, that would be a cost that the program would have to absorb as well. And talking with Coach Bonti, you know, as we kind of talked through it, one thing he is thinking is that he would, he'd like to almost have a separate account for the girls program. That was one concern that we've heard from the public. And so, fundraising for the girl-specific program, at least for right now, is something that he's talked about. Again, we're in that, we haven't even officially been recognized as a program, but just wanted, you know, those are things that we've already been talking about as to what that could look like, yeah, Mr.?
You probably should clarify for the people that are in the room what that account is, Adam. You know, so when you relate that or you make that statement about an account, so equivalent, Mr. Brunin has a basketball account that is outside, above and beyond anything in the school district. Football has an account outside, above and beyond anything to do with the school district. Softball, every sport has their own, and I don't want, it's not a slush fund, but it sits in our trust and agency. We oversee it.
Doesn't sit in trust.
I mean, it doesn't sit in our trust and agency, but...
We do oversee it.
We do oversee it to make sure that, you know, we get bank statements on that. But the totality of the dollars going into those, Craig does his own fundraisers. You know, Mr. Craig does his own fundraiser. Dan Bonti for boys wrestling does his own fundraiser. So, that's the difference here between how a school essentially is...
And softball, same thing. They've started their own account now. And so, like Coach Habik went in, opened the account. I signed on there as well so that I oversee everything and see those statements. So, just, you know, softball... So just, you know, softball does it, gymnastics does it. Every, like Mr. M said, every account, or every program has their own account. And so, you know, I was just bringing that idea forth to let the board know. We are, we're having those conversations about what all of that would look like. You know, obviously before we would move forward, we would need approval from you guys to be able to do that.
And what we, what is expected from the South Dakota High School Activities Association is a board motion, and I'm, I can't remember if there's an actual application or not, if it's nothing more than just an email or telling them, but enlightening them or indicating that the Parkston School Board by way of this motion on this particular board date says that they will support or sponsor, better word, sponsor, girls wrestling. One thing that's very clear in the South Dakota Activities Association bylaws is that has to happen. So the hiring of the coaches has to come by the school district. Every other component is abided by, just like any other sport is, that's sponsored by the South Dakota High School Activities Association. What they do not make clear in there is to the funding. They're very clear as to, they don't care where the money comes from, but ultimately the school district is in charge of all the particular programs that are sponsored by the South Dakota High School Activities Association. And Parkston says they will sponsor it. So that's the main difference here, so.
So, yeah, I mean, I talked at length with Coach Bonti about it. You know, and also I just, you know, like to bring forward, it's kinda, we have a group of kids that are interested, that are passionate about the sport. You know, and so I don't see any real negatives to the addition of it. You know, if we have kids that are passionate about it, I'm for having them explore that passion, you know. And so I guess that's what I bring forth to the board. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
What is practice the same time? Obviously you've got facilities, or should have room?
Yeah, I mean, that's our plan. You know, in talking to Coach Bonti, I think there would be enough space in our new room with two full mats that we could do that. But again, you know, as we get into it, if that coach feels like they need to practice at a different time, you know, then they will work on that together. As of right now, my vision is, in talking with Coach Bonti, I want him to oversee program wise, and we'll see who we get in place, you know. And so he would work with that coach, but I still see them at this stage in the game working under Coach Bonti and him overseeing the entire wrestling program. Not to say that couldn't evolve as we go, but I just really trust him and his vision for the program. And so that's what we have discussed at this point. But yeah, we think we would have enough space, I mean, until we really grow things.
Adam, do you have numbers?
I have numbers for what we're anticipating. I think we're looking at like eight to 10 girls right now. That Parkston, Ethan, is that kinda what we've talked about?
We're like, I don't know about that 10.
Yeah. Yep. Most of them younger in that, you know...
Middle school?
Yep, middle school range, 9th grader, and then one older junior, I think. So, you know, but a majority of younger that could potentially grow the program as well, so. That's kinda what, we have some parents back there. We've had conversations and they, you know, just shared with me how passionate their girls are for the sport. They put a lot of time into their training and participating in the lower level, you know, the AAU type wrestling. And now this is kinda that next phase for them, so.
Okay, thank you. Thoughts, comments?
My only concern was just the practice, that they're not practicing together, you know, wrestling, practicing against each other, obviously, but, you know, like you said, our facility is big enough that maybe they could have, that there'd be plenty of room, but that is my only concern.
I've got no issue with girls wrestling. I think it's, it'd be a valuable asset for a lot of girls. But you guys know my position against adding extracurriculars, so I'd be noble only for that reason, but I, um... So, you guys wanna proceed, or wait a month though?
The necessity, I mean, Jill's not here, for sure, but can you, do you have time to wait a month? You do. I don't know. I mean, the only thing I would advise you is, is anything gonna change in that timeframe? I don't know. You've had a month to think about it, you know, when it first came to fruition and the ask was there. The only thing I would encourage you is be clear as to, if you bring it to a vote tonight and whatever is in that motion, make sure it's representative of what you want to, what approach you want to take with that particular program. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is from the patrons is that they want an opportunity. It was no different than the girls softball, wanted the opportunity. They made a decision in a board motion to, okay, Parkston School District will sign the sponsorship paperwork, submit it to the South Dakota Activities Association, okay? With the caveat, we will not put any monetary funding towards the program at this point in time. That's how we, that's how you did softball a year ago. Well, yeah, about a year ago, yeah. And then prior to that, it was the same approach that you did with gymnastics, so. But it would just be clear as to when you put that in a statement, which way you're doing that. Or game on, full fun, get after it. No, not my deal. I'm just make sure you understand which way you're going.
With the softball, we had two different, two different months, two different motions. One was the sponsorship, and then the next one you have to think about is the co-op as well. You have to do a motion to...
Does that come, Mr. Fisher? Are we talking about...
That's how we did it in softball, I just told you.
Yeah, but are we talking about Ethan kids in the mix here?
Well, we are. Ethan, Parkston, and boys wrestling currently.
Well, I understand that, but that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, do we have Ethan girls that wanna be a part of this?
I think we do, yeah.
Then we would have to come back with that particular motion, because then we'd have to submit, that's a whole different line of paperwork and submit an application for a cooperative for girls wrestling as well. So one, sponsorship, two, and then a cooperative.
And then has their board talked about it yet?
Excuse me?
And Ethan, we don't know if their board's talked about it yet.
I have not had any conversation with Mr. Hawkins from Ethan, so.
I've talked to Mr. Hawkins. I know I'm not part of all this, but I, he's of full agreeance and is excited and wants his girl to be part of it, so he has...
I don't see him having any reservation about it much. I have not had the conversation with him. I appreciate that, Jessica.
How about, should we bring it back next month and get the motion clarified? Is that acceptable? Get some things ironed out and make sure we got our i's out and our t's crossed and come back then? Good with that, so.
Cause I can fill out the paperwork. We can have it in place, one sponsorship, two, and then even the cooperative. And you're still within the timeframe in order to have the Activities Association, you know, give it its blessing, so.
And Adam can still work on the process to make sure that's all...
Yep, because we'll, I mean, we'll just, there's some little things. We need to get singlets ordered and go through that process.
Some motion table.
No, it was, it was just a discussion, Adam. There was no action.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't need a motion to table it, just because it was only a discussion?
Yeah. I think as, and I'm speaking to myself as a board member, and certainly in past, I'm just thinking out loud here. Gymnastics, we did do that because of the cost to get all the equipment here for, I mean, it was just a huge amount of money if we wanted to take it on. I think about the wrestling here, girls wrestling, and any sport that we have here at the school district. In other words, I'm trying to put myself in that position of the kid, the student, that wants to be in that sport. And so, and I think as a board, we gotta start thinking about this a little bit. Because we're, if you're out for football, boys, pay for everything. If you're out for basketball, we pay for everything. You know, I can go on the list, golf, you know, all the stuff that we're sponsoring that have been in there, except recently now we've talked about softball and now wrestling, girls wrestling, and we're not, we're not paying for that. So how, how does that student feel? We gotta think about that, because I think it's just short of discrimination. And so we're paying for everything on all the other sports except this here. And I'm being upfront, I, I don't know, guys. We gotta think about that. Because I'm putting myself in that person's shoes, and I don't think, I don't think I'd feel so good. I'm just, that's the elephant in the room, quite frankly. And if we have to, you know, I'm willing to, like, on softball, if they, maybe they need to supply the bats and the gloves and... And there's some costs here that they'd have to do on their own as students. But I think we need to look, look at that and how that, maybe that's the only sport a person wants to go in. And I don't know. I'm just, I think we have to think about that as a board.
And I hear you, yeah, and I don't disagree with any of that. But it comes back to, when is it, when do you stop? You know, do we have two kids come in from Sioux Falls and, you know, they've been playing tennis their whole careers and they wanna, and they wanna play tennis, are we gonna...
And maybe that's one like gymnastics, Matt, where it's prohibitive, because we don't have facilities at this point in time to do that. So maybe that's not possible, but we have facilities for wrestling here. We have facilities for softball. And so I understand, but, you know, when we talk about money, and nobody wants to talk about that either except me, but we look at 60% of the schools and the state have an opt-out, and they got money. And if that's what our constituents want here, then I'm just saying that I think we have to at least look at it. Money's there, it's just on the approach of it. It's part of education. So yeah, I think we have to look at it pretty hard. And if some sharing of cost has to take place on a couple of sports to help that, I think, I see that. I don't think we have to supply 200 bats out here, all the gloves that kids use, you know, for talking to softball and baseball. We're trying to help with pumps and wrestling and uniforms. Cause we're not talking about football guys coming in here and saying, geez, you know, do I need to pay for my uniforms? Nothing's, basketball, golf?
I would, I would disagree with you on some of that. You'd be surprised how much some of the sports.
Well, I get that, but...
It's not just, it's, you know, warmups, things they, some of the jersey components that they do wear in the games, they do pay for them themselves, you know, and for some of the sports, it adds up.
But that's a personal choice, right?
No.
So the coach is telling them they have to have this, okay? And so what about that money that they have in that slush fund?
I mean, it gets used for other things, I mean, I...
Well, we look...
And I wouldn't say a lot of, some of the stuff that they're required to buy is absolutely necessary, you know, it would be...
That's my point. No, I understand that. I'm not trying to give an argument here on money or anything else, but I think we have to look at education and we have to look at how kids feel. And if we have to weigh, make a way to help fund that situation, let's, let's work on that. So yeah, I'd be in favor of the situation to get it going. And then I think as a board, you need to take the next step.
So do some more diligence, come back next month, and make a decision.
Adam, quick question. Like tournaments and stuff, are they the same weekend, girls the same weekend as guys wherever?
Yep.
Okay, just different locations though?
Oh, okay.
Sure. I didn't know if it was in the same area or whatever, but...
Just out of curiosity, can we get some numbers too, just what would it cost fully fund girls wrestling? Let me just...
Wrestling, you mean?
Yes, just for next month.
If we had a head coach, here's the supplies, here's the entry fees?
Just rough numbers.
Yep, here's the busing that would take it?
As tight as we could get them, but, I mean, just, just so, hey, you know, here's...
Absolutely.
A lot of that's gonna depend on how many events you allow them to do. Cause when you look at a wrestling event, it's gonna be $500 to $1,000 every bus trip. Because some of them are farther away than others, when the weekend tournaments and stuff. So that's one dilemma there that I would have coming up with numbers. You gotta tell me how many events. Cause that, to be honest with you guys, there's two, there's two components that are gonna cost. The coach and the transportation. Other than that, I mean, the uniforms, but that's once every four years.
Location.
Everyone's gonna get a house. So that would be the hard part, I mean...
I got someone on the idea of even dredging those waters, but I'm just, just out of curiosity, I just like to know roughly where we'd be, and I mean, I don't know, what's a reasonable amount of events to attend to?
A reasonable amount to attend?
Yeah, for, if we're fully funding it. I don't know. This is on my wheelhouse.
So, I mean, you have to, I don't know, I'd have to look at...
Doesn't the state have a minimum?
They have minimum, I don't know that off the top of my head.
A maximum number, I don't really, yeah. They have minimum number and maximum number of events if you can participate in. Can you have...
I can look that up and have that for you, at least.
Yeah, just so we know. I mean...
Transportation, maybe we could take vans too.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, I mean, how...
I think Jet's question was how many events do they have to participate to like qualify for a region?
Yep, I did get that, absolutely.
Okay, anything else? We'll come back next month and be ready to decide.
Sounds clear.
And decide and auto-recede, okay? All right, we will move on to discussed request for personal train access to district facilities.
Do you get each there, man?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. I wonder why, I skipped the audit. We want to talk about the audit. We will discuss the 22, 23 audit from Shaw Fish and Company.
So you have this book here that they gave each person. That's probably yours, cause mine's down here.
And I put the three, I think three sheets in your packet too that essentially surmised that.
Did you put those in?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you have the first couple, yeah.
Yeah.
Email one or email two?
What?
Email.
Oh, yeah, right, sorry. That was me being a tree killer. Why'd I get my money's worth? I wasn't here last, or last month, too. Sorry. But I'll let Craig speak to the audit. I mean, essentially it was a good audit, but, you know, internal control, that's really about it. Craig, I don't know what else to speak to.
The one deficiency that they found, and that's been in every audit for the last 15 years, and it's in every audit in every school district, with the exception of... Who'd say, that they do two?
I think it was two.
Yeah.
Most businesses have the same thing.
Yeah.
Todd County and Huron?
I can't remember who the other one was, but yeah. It was a bigger school. And the other one was a bigger school, the double A school district, but...
Is that just the gate cuts, or what is that?
You know what it is, is they're saying we need to have, to have number of eyes on the different things. It's like five people in the business office. It's ridiculous to have the number...
According to the Fed regulations?
Yes, yeah.
It's separation of powers.
So one of, one of the things that, you know, suggested, that's why tonight in the green folder, to put more eyes on vouchers, to put more eyes on bills, and the actual bill in of itself, because Craig could give you and run that report, but would you know without ever seeing the bill? Just because he...
That report matched the...
Did that that report really was indicative or reflective of what we got in vouchers?
Paper trail?
No. I mean, Craig could cook the books that way. I mean, I don't, yeah. But that's one more step for you guys actually seeing the bill, that, oh, that matches that voucher, yep, there's, there's that concept, so. As far as the number of, the amount of money changing hands and the number of people in a business office in order to ever get clear of internal control finding, you, there is no district that will ever... clear of internal control finding, you, there is no district that will ever have that total amount of one expenditure monetary resource to hire four more people, the one that can count all the gate receipts, and the one that does all the payroll, and the one that pays all the bills in the capital outlay, and all the bills in the general fund. It just, it's not plausible.
Nor would they be a full-time position in districts most sizes in South State of South Dakota. So, you know. But, so, that was the one thing, other than that, there was nothing else.
That was it.
Questions?
You guys have the book?
Craig, we do, I, I would like a motion on that, though, please, for the audit. Approve the audit.
Okay.
Accept motion to approve the audit.
Absolutely.
Move by Pearl?
Second.
Second by Shawn Felder, to approve the 22-23 fiscal year audit. Any other discussion? Here, now, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Motion, Craig.
Okay, now we will move on to discuss requests for personal training access in district facilities.
I, I included a, a, I don't know. Do you wanna call it a proposal, I suspect, from an individual who has the certification of being a, some sort of personal trainer by what entity? I think he explained some of that stuff in his, his request. Um, you know, this individual actually has a contract with Avera St. Benedict, who utilizes their wellness center to work with private clients, and whatever situation they got charged, or they got worked out between the Avera St. Benedict and this individual, you know, that's between them. Um, you know, the same request is to come, and now that you have this new fitness space, and a very elaborate facility that's got way more, one, space, two, equipment, uh, for somebody who's a certified trader to, you know, help their clients with, and expose them to a lot of different exercises, a lot of different, um, machines, universal free weights, things like that. You know, um, I mean, I'm begrudging for the ask, I have no problem with, with the ask. Um, I don't know that I have a real heartburn either way, but I believe there's precedent that's been set here. Um, I don't know, Mr. Pearl, maybe you're the only one, probably, board access knowledge. I don't know, Matt, I don't know that you were on it yet, but, um, a similar request was made in the community, from against a couple guys that were lifting weights in their garage and stuff, and had people that they were helping to lift weights, and kinda training on the side, and I think they were, those people were paying those guys to, to go into their garage and do that. Well, I believe they came to the school board and made such a similar request, and they wanted access to your weight room at that time. I don't know the reasons and rationale as to what that, uh, decision was, but I believe at the time, Mr. Pearl, maybe can speak to it, or Craig, because you were here, the answer to that was, no.
No.
Because of personal gain. And I think that was the biggest component, is that that person was going to benefit financially from utilizing the district's space. I think that was the biggest angst, I think. So, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll be quiet at this point, so...
Yeah, I think that's right. And I, I don't know if there was ever much talk that they were gonna pay us anything. Got a little different twist here. It sounds like he's willing to pay. And so, I'm pretty neutral. It helps kids, adults, whatever.
If I could just jump in a little bit. I, I do have some strong feelings against this. I think, uh, for me, what we're trying to accomplish with our space is that we want our coaches and our teams in there together. And I think if you bring in an outside resource like that, who's working for their own financial gain, I worry that it turns into a kinda who's who, who can pay the money to work with that person, and you create this divide amongst the teams. That's my fear. Um, that some start to, well, I'm not gonna work out with the train with the team, because I'm gonna go do this, with this guy in our own facility. I know that that can happen outside of our, our district, I get that. But I think we need to try to do everything we can to preserve our kids being in there together with their coaches. We're willing to bring in, in a Vera guy to come in and work with our team specifically, communicate with our coaches specifically, make sure we're doing things for our kids in there, and they're together. I, I have a lot of concern over someone who is like, hey, pay me, and then I'll train you. I don't, I don't like what that does for, for anything for our school moving forward, for our teams. I just, if they wanna go do that outside as an, in addition to what we offer as a school, then I, you know, I get that. I still think the most important relationships that are formed are together as a team working out. So, I, I would speak strongly against it. I haven't had any good experiences with someone coming in like that, that isn't working in correlation with our coaches or with our staff, um, to run what we...
But, but what if, Adam, what if he's working, I, I get it, if you're talking student athletes, right?
Yep.
So, what if he's talking about other people out of school?
Yeah, then I don't really have an issue with it.
Okay.
As long as he's...
So you gotta separate here a little bit, right?
Yes.
So when you talk about against something...
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, let me clarify about, sorry about that.
So have you, have you had any Avera people in yet, that you're talking about?
We have, yep. We're not in our new facility, but for the last couple summers, we have had, yes.
Three years. James has been with us for three.
Is it three, eh?
I'm pretty sure it's three.
So we have had, yes, him coming in and working with our athletes, yeah.
I, I just personally think this is opening a floodgate to utilize a taxpayer-funded facility for, for personal gain. I think, I mean, I think this is...
He wants to come in and work out and give us a membership, knock yourself out.
Yeah, I, I think this is slippery.
Hanging a shingle on our door, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm, I don't know. I, because, where does it start, where does it stop?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know.
I did, I did talk to the hospital, and for whatever reason, they decided, that board decided to allow this. I mean, I believe in here, he's got the price point, and that price point is valid, what he puts in there, um, that they, he gives back to them. But I think the thing there, too, is the, the scenario there is, that particular individual is actually the employee of that footprint as well.
He's an employee of Avera?
Yes.
Oh.
He works in that facility.
Okay.
And does this on the side, so I suspect maybe there was a little bit of, uh, you know, uh, what's the right word? Not guilty, or maybe you felt you had to help the dude out, you know, a little bit, because he, he works for you during the day, too, you know?
So, so if somebody out of high school wants this person to help them, is he allowed to come in and help them in our facility?
Well...
Is he charging to do so, or is he coming in?
I think that's the appropriate word.
If it's between those two. Right? I, I mean, I don't know, guys. I mean, before we just rush to judgment here.
I just remember, John, with the first one situation, 10 years ago, what Adam's talking about was the same thing. Because people weren't listening to, the kids weren't now listening to here, and they were listening to them, and they were training in a different way, that wasn't necessarily sport-specific. And they were doing things on game days, and a student hurt their back on a game day, doing something that they should not have been doing on a game day.
Sure.
Were they targeting that age population? Was that, were they intentional about targeting that group?
I don't think they trained anybody else other than that age.
I, I think it was all high school kids.
At that time, yeah. But I'm just saying, so what Adam's talking about is very similar in that previous situation.
Yeah, and I, trust me, I was on the board.
And this may not come to that, I don't know.
Yeah, I voted no. I mean, I, I agree with that. I'm just saying, it's just a little different circumstance here, and I'm just, I, I'm not...
I don't know how you track it. What I hear you saying, John, is, is if he, he deals with old, fat, and decrepit me on the side, and him and I come up together, and he supports me, and I walk out the door, and I give him 25 bucks, how's, how's, how are we gonna know? I don't know. But, we wanna have it publicly acknowledged, and the ability for him to hang a shingle, you know, to, we, if part of his promotion to get customers, hey, I'll train you up here, and Parkson School District is all open, all for it, blah, 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 you know, here's what I'm gonna charge you. I mean, obviously, he's suggesting to give you money back out of the deal, but, I, you know.
I don't know what that was.
If it goes to that degree, well, whatever.
My concern was, what, what does that look like from a liability standpoint for us? You know, he's not a, he's not an employee.
Yeah.
Where he's an employee out there.
Are we gonna, is any possible liability gonna fall by on us?
I have to look at that. But it can't be any more liability, you know, when we first brought this premise to you, when I first came here, of allowing basically an open door policy there, too. Where we have kids in the footprint right now, you know, and we're gonna have kids in this footprint right now, you know.
So I'm, I mean, as far as liability, as far as the kid being instructed to lift or, in a certain way, and injure somehow.
The way he's, the way he's doing it with you, yeah.
It was in our facility, and, you know, like you said, there's no way you can control that on the side.
I see what you're saying. So we might have to look into that, with the charge of compensation, what you're saying.
Yeah, I think, that's it, is if he brings one of us in, and is training us, and one of us gets hurt, even, you know, like, older person brings somebody in, and, you know, even if you're using your membership, and they come, but somebody gets hurt, how does that?
Yeah. Something to look into.
But if you're...
Because he instructed you to do it that way? Is that where the liability, that's what you're thinking, comes into? Yeah.
Could be, but if, you know, if we just come in or do it ourselves, then the liability's on you.
So here, here's a good point. Like, if I go shingle, I can be licensed, insured, and bonded, right? So if something happens, I mean, that, that's a, if he's a so-called...
Personal trainer.
Well, but certified, an N C, NSCA certified strength and conditioning specialist, he has the certifications to do that. Is he carrying his own liability insurance in order to go work with people? You know, so he's covered in the event that, you know, something goes amiss or, or I. You know, is he covering his own bases in that respect? And that was, I didn't ask that question. I mean, it was never clarified in here. It was, I probably didn't even think to ask that question at the time.
Sure.
Now, I do have a copy of the agreement, it's something with the other entity, maybe it's in there. I guess, I'd, I'd have to go look at that, so...
But to Jeff's point of opening it up, that you opened it up to this, and there will be others coming, too.
Asking to use the space for their personal gain.
We want people to use it, right?
Yes.
And we're gonna ask for a membership to have access to it, you know, then there is the ask. Okay, well, I got my own membership, but are you gonna, and how many people, this, at least, the only thing I give this guy, this young man for, is he's asking.
Yeah.
How many are gonna come in and do it anyway, and not say a word to you?
That's, that was just what I said.
I have no idea.
That's gonna keep that person from coming in anyway. Buys a membership, you can do it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, this guy at least had the graciousness to bring it in front of you and say, hey, consider...
I didn't say that it's right or anything else. I was saying that it can happen anyway, guys, and you ain't gonna know any different.
Right.
This way, at least he was upfront, and he was willing to pay us something.
But you could have that in your agreement, that they can't do that, those types of things, and if their agreement, they sign that agreement on the membership side, and that happens, you can deactivate their card, and they don't have access anymore, because they violated their agreement. If you didn't want that to happen, then you found out about it.
It's not in there right now.
Yeah.
That's an acceptable use component, so...
Yeah.
Well, I guess I pose a question to you, then. Would it make a difference if you knew he was licensed, insured, and bonded? Or, that doesn't make you give any more one, buzzing, you still don't care, and I just don't like opening the door to somebody coming in for personal gain? Because if that's your answer, then make the statement.
That's how I feel. I mean, me personally, I just, I, I, I don't like the idea of our facility being utilized for personal gain like that. I, I just don't. That's just me personally. I don't know. I don't know if anybody else has the same sentiment. And I, to echo what Mr. Fisher said, I, I think that could, it's got the potential to create angst. I think we all at least agree on that. It does have, there is some potential there. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I guess that's kinda where I'm at.
I agree.
And I, I have never talked into this individual face-to-face, a phone call. This has all been through text, and, you know, I'm not, uh, discrediting, um, him in any way, shape, or form, but not once I didn't suggest, nor did he ask, would it help if I came and stood before? I mean, I, I just said, if you, this is something that you're considering, I said, write a proposal. I said, I will present it to the school board, you know, on your behalf. That's all I told him. But he never said, well, would it help, or should I, or come, or whatever, either. So, I mean, I don't know of how passionate, you know, he is about having access to the footprint, so, but...
On this one thing, maybe, too, to look into whether or not, would he be better than James, doing what James is doing for our kids as a group?
Right, but I think that's, that's the difference in how it's been approached.
Yeah, yep, yep. But that's something we could possibly look into, too. Because that is not individualized as much.
Correct.
Or for something.
So what I'm hearing is, we need more details, or does somebody have a motion?
Yeah, I think, I think we, worst we can do is say no next month, right?
Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. We can get more details on it, sure.
I think we get some details, and see if they're an employee up there, for sure. See if they have liability insurance, is what I'm hearing.
And how our insurance would feel about it.
Yep.
Are we letting Avera come out and use, like, like, like getting their physical therapy people, are we letting them come out and use? I didn't know since we were in the agreement.
No.
Okay.
No, I had no, that was part of the conversation.
Okay.
The necessity to do so was not there, so...
Adam, do you, do you know this person at all?
I do not.
Okay. Do you, would that be part of our detail? Do you wanna call him up and at least talk to him?
Yeah, I could, but I, I still, I don't, I mean...
What, what I'm saying is that you're having Avera come here anyway, right?
Yeah.
So does he have the same training as this person that you're getting?
Does this person here have the same training? I don't know. I, I guess I don't know that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. But I think, I mean, regardless, I just, something that's not working with our coaches, doing something separate.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm not really interested in that.
Okay.
I mean, we already got James coming in, so now you got James's style, and you got this guy's style, and I think our coaches are comfortable with James' style.
Well, James is helping, James is doing stuff based on what we tell him.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he'll create the workout plan, but he meets with the coaches, and talks with them about what they're trying to...
Accountable.
Accountable.
Sure.
Works with that, so...
Okay.
It's not really a private, it's not a private, it's not a private trade.
He's not private, he works out there, yeah.
I mean, he probably, probably could be up there, but not, not how we employ him.
Yeah.
All right, well, we will, uh, bring this back next month for further consideration.
So what, are we paying this guy?
Yep.
We pay Avera.
Yeah.
Not, yeah.
Not him personally.
Is that part of Avera's agreement with us, or we pay, we're paying addition because he's coming down?
Yeah.
Yeah, we get a, a deal with Avera, not with, I don't know, how do you wanna say this? We do get a deal with Avera because we have, uh, I don't know, we have some sort of partnership with them.
It's a contract through Avera. It's not a contract with this individual person.
I see. So, so, but, so it's part of that contract, that he's included in that, or is it extra?
There's a, like, a discounted rate, I believe, as of the fact that...
Just find out what we're paying for this guy to come, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we will move on to action items. Approve financial report.
That is a G.
Darn it.
School calendar.
Sorry. Jake, go consider change the school calendar.
Essentially, uh, changing the, um, November 14th, uh, Professional Development Day to the 15th. And the rationale behind that is, the 14th has always been what we've identified as, um, the state football championships, and we, this, I know you said this two years in a row, Matt, Activity Association needs to let us know sooner. Well, you know, we don't have any control over that. So, but the NCAA game, whether we're in it or not in it, is seven o'clock on that Thursday night. So there's no reason why we can't go to the school on the 14th. People wanna go, wanna attend, whether we're in it or we're not, they can go down to Vermillion, do their thing, and then we'll have Professional Development, um, Staff Work Day on Friday the 15th, so, um, and that's really the only change there, so...
Accept a motion?
Move by Turner, second by Shawn Felder. Any other discussion?
Any other discussion? Didn't even let you get it up.
You're fine. To read my mind now.
To amend the school calendar by moving our Professional Development Day on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four to November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any other discussion? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carried.
Okay, now we'll move on to approve the financial report.
That's your golden rod sheet in your packet.
Questions, comments?
Shouldn't be too much on there, we're just getting started, so. Craig, you got anything there that?
Nope.
No bells or whistles or alarms or?
The only question I had, which maybe you've told us this already, but that scholarship fund.
Yep, we, Mr. Akra and I went back through that and we have the last, um, number of years that that check has been coming from that South Dakota. I've been working with Mike Boer and they will not allow us to give them that money like I thought they would to just add it to the, because of the dollar amount that they're at already. Has something to do with that.
Who's they?
The Parkson Area Foundation, that one that the Senior Drive, you know, does.
Yeah.
We were trying to give it to them at the time of the Senior Drive and they said, well, our, I don't know what terminology he used, but the total funds in there is like, kind of, this would put it over or something. So we're, what we're doing is we've taken every kid that's went to college for each of those years that we've received this check and we're gonna write them a check for it. So it'll be gone after this month.
And will we continue to get checks?
I don't, well, I called the lady in Florida. She didn't have a lot of guidance for me because the lady, her sister has passed away and this is why we got the money. Um, but she didn't really care or have any guidance for what we wanted to, what we were supposed to do. In the very first one, I mean, the letter, I mean, we kept working, I think we're just giving it to Mike, you know, and they won't allow us to do that.
Okay.
So that's what Mr. Akra and I have been working out. So he went through the lists of all the kids.
Which kids we talking about here?
For the last three years.
Oh, say how many years is what I'm asking.
Each year, so what I did is every year, every kid is gonna get like $435.
Above and beyond what they already got for the scholarship?
For this scholarship.
Just this one, right?
So each year it's been about, every year it goes down a little bit, every, one year was up, next year's down, I mean.
Their senior scholarship fundraiser is supposed to pay for every, that's a whole different deal.
This is from the South Dakota, yes, that's a whole different deal.
Yeah, that's a whole different deal.
This is coming from the South Dakota Community Foundation and it comes in the name of this one lady and there's a sister in Florida.
It has a name on it.
I can't remember the lady's name off the top of my head. But, so, Mr. Akra, we went back and every kid that went to college or VOTAC, because that's what it said, full secondary education, um, in those years, where we divided it up and.
She was like.
An average of $435 a kid.
She was like, go ahead.
Yeah. So each year, that's what we're gonna do going forward. Instead of them just adding it to that one, I thought would be the easiest.
But they won't allow that because of.
Because of something with their.
Monetary restrictions.
And the total dollar value that they have in there and all that stuff and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Craig, tell me where we're at on, um, on our new addition here on our payment wise. Are we, is everything paid?
No. I think we're $500,000 left.
Okay.
That was as of the August bill and this bill wasn't very big. I remember it, they only had, so, in your packet this month wasn't very big.
Architecture Inc. has still got money on the table that we owe them. Pitts has still got money on the table.
So where I'm driving at with this is what amount of money we're gonna have left?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and maybe you don't know that yet.
Um, well, that's right, I did look that up today and there was 551,000 after the August payment that we made, left to finish for the project. For the building project. Now, we also have the HVAC project that is a hundred and fifty, no, a hundred and, is it a Fitch four eighty-nine, I can't remember.
It was fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand or something like that left to pay on that one. But that one will get reimbursed for, but, um.
But you're asking two different questions.
Yep.
You're addressing one and he's asking a different. There's gonna be a balance when all the bills are paid, out of the $7 million of certificates that we bought, what is the balance left?
That I can't tell, we got a 551,000 approximately left to pay. The interest we gained was $197,000 on the savings account from those capital outlay certificates.
Sure.
And, um, we had $7,400,000 in there to begin with. I'm guessing we'll have $7,000 left over. Seven, eight, seven, eight hundred thousand, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Give me just a little.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I think we all about killed on that one.
Because the contingency is the part that I don't know, Mr. M. Mr. M knows more about what's left of the contingency than I am. I just, based on the payments that, payment sheets that I get, last month was 551,000 left to finish.
Sure. The total cost of the project, that included architect fees, construction management fees, um, was right at 6.3 million something, something. And one of the line items within the 6.3 million was a $350,000 of contingency. You know, but that was already built in, we did not spend that. In fact, we're probably gonna have close to $160,000 left in contingency. So you had 160,000 to the 198,000 that you had in interest. And then the $700,000 that you came under budget, even though you sold 7 million. So when it's all come and done, you're gonna be between 800,000 to a million dollars sitting there yet with next planned discussion process and what are we gonna do with that money?
So what I'm saying, John, basically is.
Can that go on the general fund?
No.
No, it's capital outlay.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, yep.
Because right now, the ending balance in capital outlay after was 1,018.
We still have some bills to pay out of that, yeah.
Sure, 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 okay, thank you.
But we've also expended a lot out of capital outlay for this current fiscal year that we haven't collected any taxes on. Follow me.
Yeah.
So, I mean, going forward, um, this year, it may have been negative at this point because of paying all the other stuff that we've done for capital outlay, our normal budgeted items. Cause remember, we don't get taxes until November and then by that time, most of the capital outlay stuff is already done for the year.
It's been paid, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes. How's our interest-bearing situation at the bank?
Good.
Good.
Last year, we made $58,000 in interest.
They're staying competitive.
That's a little bit better than two years ago when we made 2,000.
Tell them thank you.
Yeah, I will.
Thumbs up. Appreciate it.
All right, anything else, move on?
We need a motion for that, to approve that.
So move.
Move by Proll?
Second.
Second by Turner, any other discussion? Hearing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carried.
Okay. B, approve the 2425 budget.
Yep, so there's no changes from the one that was published in July. So, we'll go through the resolution here. It'll be resolved at the school district, the Parkston School District thirty-three dash three. School Board, after duly considering the proposed budget there to, to be published in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law thirteen eleven dash two, hereby approves and adopts the proposed budget to be its annual budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Those totals are as follows. General Fund, 5,340,980. Capital Outlay, 2,578,250. Special Education, 1,015,134. Food Service, 365,092. Enterprise Fund, 8,440. And to certify the filing tax levies to the county auditor will be as follows. General Fund, 1.197 per 1,000 of ag valuation. 2.679 per 1,000 of owner occupied valuation. And 5.54 per 1,000 of all other properties. Those amounts are set by the state and given to us. By then, we do not have control over those amounts there. Capital Outlay, we're requesting 1.3 million dollars. Education or special education is 1.44, or I'm sorry, 1.48, eight per 1,000 of valuation. And that's the, that, that amount is given to us as the maximum for special education as well from the state. And that one, that 1,300,000, that's what we asked for last year as well. Did not change.
So how are you feeling about the budget so far, Craig?
Um, currently, what we're going so far throughout the year, I mean, the last couple months is all, um, I think it's gonna be fine. I'm, so, I don't have any concerns.
I think we felt even last year, you're going.
Especially now that, right now, as of now.
Yeah.
Actually, when you said 540, I built the budget on 530. So, I mean, 10 more kids is a bonus. And interest rates are still up, so that's a bonus. I mean, you think about that, two years ago, that's $50,000 difference.
Pay for some of our insurance increase.
Yes, and that, um, you know, a 20 cent increase in special education was only a $50,000 increase. You know? And total taxes received in special education. So that, that interest thing is huge. Too. That's, that's a 10, nine, eight, nine, 10 kid bonus, yeah.
But even last year, just a reminder that when we set the budget, I mean, we had concerns, I don't know, midway through or whatever, that maybe we were gonna come up short, this, that and the other, but, um, we didn't. And in fact, this year, one of your line items in your budget is your capital outlay transfer to general fund of 2, 275,000. And we didn't even do that and we still, we still kept our head where it should have been, so. And yes, that 275.
Part of it.
Yeah, 275 is back in there as a line item for revenue, certainly. But with that said, I, you know.
And that's not the maximum you can ask for at all. As a transfer from capital outlay.
Correct.
But for us, I mean, remember when this 1.3 is, um, the payment for the capital outlay certificates, it didn't change basically the amount we have to spend going forward from what we're prior to the project. Does that make sense? Been the prior to the project, we're asking for 850 to 900,000 total. Well, we moved it to here because of the payment of the interest in the capital certificate principal. So we're still at that 800,000 in capital outlay to spend each year. Does that make sense? That's not the maximum. This 1.3 million of approximately 2.3, $2.30 per 1,000. Approximately. Rough numbers off the top of my head, whatever, remember, but remember, valuations changed, so that affects your dollar per 1,000.
Does.
So.
Okay, thank you.
So I need a, a motion for that, to approve that resolution. So, move by Sean Felder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Proll and then I'll do a roll call vote. Proll?
Yes.
Sean Felder?
Yes.
Leisner?
Yes.
And Turner. Okay, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to action item C, approve invoice from Lind and Parkston Electric for CTE grant equipment.
Yes, those two amount, I got it right here. These two amounts from Lind was 35,000 for a Pro Lancer Effective Cutting Area and C, or CNC Cutting Machine Package per quote that was done for the grant. And then the other one was the remaining amount for Parkston Electric to, uh,